Tell them to planning@dm.gov.org. So a staff host may be able to share them on the screen when you present. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Staff has attempted to compile a list of people who would like to speak on each item. Staff will first call on these people and then we'll open it up to anyone else who wishes to speak. To request to speak during the hearing, please use the raise hand function on Zoom on the Internet or dial star nine on your phone. Once permission to speak is given, to unmute and mute dial star six on your phone. You will be required to give your name and address for the record prior to speaking. Also, we ask that you keep your microphones and phones on mute unless you've been given the chance to address the commission by the chair. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal if any opponent spoke. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The city of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. Please know that typical accommodations may be limited by emergency requirements as issued by the state of Iowa and the city of Des Moines. I believe we have a quorum. So Tyler, roll call please.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Will Page? Johnny Alcevar?
Here.
Dory Bryles?
Here.
Jan Fried?
Here.
Caleb Burksen?
Here.
Lisa Howard?
Here.
Steve Wallace?
Here.
Carol- Carolyn Jenison?
Yes, here.
Francis- Francis Bogus?
Here.
Greg Watier?
Here.
Abby Chungis?
Here.
And Greg Jones?
Here.
Emily Webb did advise she would be with us tonight, so we do have 12 present.
Okay, thank you Tyler. Do I have approval or a motion for the minutes or any corrections?
This is Dory, I'll move approval of the minutes.
Thanks, Dory. Tyler?
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungis?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Dory Bryles?
Yes.
Johnny Alcevar?
Yes.
And Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Motion carries 12-0.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. We have several items that could be possibly moved to consent if no one in the audience wants to hear them, or no objections I should say, and no- and if no one on the commission wants to hear them. And we're going to start with item number five. Request from James Andrew and Nancy Albright Andrew for the following regarding the property at 3900 Southeast 34th Street. Is there- is there- excuse me, is there anyone who objects moving this to consent? Raise your hand please. I'm looking for hands here.
They raised to the top, so if-
I don't see any.
Yeah, I don't see any either. Okay, is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item? Item number five. Please, please let me know. Item number six. Request from Cruz Construction. Hold on a second. Represented by Dan Cruz for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for a type two design alternative in accordance with chapter 135, sections 135-9.2.4.b and 135-9.3.1.b for property located at 5702 Woolcot-Cot Circle to allow the construction of a house type A. Is there anyone in the audience who objects moving this to consent? Please raise your hand or star nine on your phone.
No, I see any, not in dress.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item? Item number- excuse me, item number six. Now we will go to item number seven. It's been suggested this can be moved to consent. Item number seven, request from February 30th Properties doing business at South Des Moines Vet Center, represented by Jeremy Bu- uh, Byer, for the following regarding the property at 601 Army Post Road and 6302 Southwest 6th Street. The subject property title- title holders are Joseph and Deborah Madonia. Is there anyone in the audience or online who objects to moving this to consent? Okay, I see a hand. Uh, but the hand went down. What- um, the hand went up.
Just to- just to confirm for Amanda, so you are opposed to this request?
I'd allow her to speak if she wants to, uh-
Amanda, you want to unmute yourself and indicate if you are opposed to the request? Amanda, you've been there-
Technical difficulty.
That's okay. Are you opposed to the request or- I just want to make sure you understand the process?
As far as switching the zoning to veterinary?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that, then we'll have to hear that item, Chair.
Okay, okay. Um, I believe that's it for consent item, is that correct? So that would be moving five and six to consent. Do I have a motion?
This is Dory, I'll move items five and six to the consent agenda.
Thanks, Dory. Okay, so we have a motion, we're moving item five and six to consent. Tyler?
Dory Bryles?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungis?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
And Johnny Alcevar?
Yes.
A motion carries- motion to continue items five and six carries 12-0.
On consent?
Yeah, to consent, now we have to- there has to be a motion to approve the consent.
Yeah, thank you, I tend to forget that step, thanks Eric. Okay, so we need a motion now to approve the consent items, we have two consent items.
This is Greg, I move him.
Thank you Greg. Tyler?
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungis?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Johnny Alcevar? And Dory Bryles?
Yes.
So motion to approve consent passes 12-0.
Thank you Tyler. We have a couple items that have been asked to be continued to the January meeting. The first one is item number one, request from Wesley Retirement Services, represented by Rob Kretzinger, for review and approval of an amendment to Wesley Acres PUD conceptual plan. Bert, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, Madam Chairman of the Commission, Bert Ross, planner for the city of Des Moines, that Wesley Acres has requested a continuance to the January 21 Plan of Zoning Commission meeting. And the reasoning was they need additional time to meet with the neighborhood association, they've been having ongoing conversations that they would like to continue. So they have requested a continuance to the January 21 agenda and it is also, I would mention likely that staff will be mailing out new public notices to reflect any changes that may be forthcoming on their proposal.
Can we handle both of the continuing items in one motion or do we have to have separate?
No, you could do both on one motion.
Thank you. We've also been requested to continue item number nine. Item number nine is a request from HJT Incorporated, represented by Jack Houghton, for the following regarding the property at 2101 Dixon Street. Eric?
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, the- we got some recent information from the applicant that had been asked for by the zoning enforcement officer. The zoning enforcement officer is asking for additional time to basically go through that information and weigh it against state and federal regulations and so she's- she's asking for a continuance and the owner applicant is in agreement with that after speaking with him this afternoon, so.
Okay.
This has been recommended for a continuance to the January 21st.
Okay, thanks Eric. Do I have a motion to continue these two items, please?
This is Abby, I'll make a motion to continue items one and nine.
Thank you Abby. Tyler?
Abby Chungis?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Johnny Alcevar?
Yes.
Dory Bryles?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
And Greg Jones?
Yes.
So motion to continue items number one and number nine to the January 21st, 2021 meeting, passes 12-0.
Thank you Tyler. Now we're on to item number two.
Yes, Madam Chair, so we should clarify for everybody that's in the- this is Eric Lundey, Senior City Planner, uh, items one, uh, five, six, and nine will not be considered at- any further at this point. So if anybody's here for one, five, six, or nine, uh, they will not be taking up- taken up this evening.
Okay.
They've already been dispensed of or they will not be taken up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, yep. And item two, item two is a request from Pride Craft Custom Homes at 1416 East 36th This was actually continued because it needed to be re notified in order to have proper notification, so it's now in front of you after being on the agenda last month. This is the subject property near Indianapolis and East 36th Court. Uh, this is looking, uh, down East 36th Court to the north. This is the- the site on the west side of East, looking northwest, a little bit more along the street. You can see the- the curb and the, you know, approaches, a lot of them are very new, but there's no sidewalk on this side of the street. And this is just further down to get a feel for that. For the record, we have the application made by the applicant for the public hearing site plan for the type two application to request waiver of the sidewalk. This is the plan that was submitted for the- for the project, for the new home to be built on the site. Just so you know, they've gotten conditional approval of the permit to proceed, uh, subject to providing the sidewalk and the, uh, if the commission denies that waiver, then they will be obligated to install the sidewalk with the permit. Uh, this is the staff report. Staff is, uh, I think we've been consistent with these based on Move DSM and trap-in-direction from traffic engineering. Staff is recommending denial of the requested type two design alternative to waive the sidewalk. We don't believe there's a practical difficulty in this case. And, uh, we're again looking to further the priorities of the Move DSM plan which is adopted by city council. And, uh, it's further indicated that it is the understanding that, you know, there's large gaps in the system right now and that the- that the goal of the city council is to provide sidewalk incrementally when investment is made, uh, along these streets. We did not get any, uh, written comments, uh, in opposition or in favor. I don't have any further, uh, anything further unless there's questions of the commission.
Okay, questions of Eric at this point? Okay, excuse me.
And if anybody wants to see anything then more closely or go back to it.
Okay, well, if the applicant's online, please state your name and address. I see a hand.
Yes, Jason Duran is, uh, Duran is, uh, on, he just has to press either if he's- if he's on his phone, star six to unmute or unmute on his computer.
Looks like he's on the computer, so Jason, can you unmute?
Oh, all right, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, hey, all right, yes. Yeah, I'm on my cell phone, so I'm trying to figure out how to do this on a phone here.
Okay, your name and address, please.
Uh, Jason Duran, and my address is 10470 Clark Street in Clive.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, the reason why I quite requested to talk to you guys about this here, um, you know, I understand about the whole move to Des Moines, um, master plan for transportation and I think it's- it's a very good plan, very good thing that is happening in Des Moines, so I am definitely not opposed to that. I'm a big bicyclist, I really love the, uh, bicyclist part of that. Um, can you guys still hear me?
Uh-huh, yes.
Okay, yeah, something came up on my phone and asked me to unmute, so I just wasn't sure if I was still muted or not.
Now you're on.
Um, okay, so yeah, so- so the move to Des Moines, I- I'm totally down with that, I- I- I think that's a great plan and it's a great thing that once it gets done, it's going to be fantastic for the city of Des Moines. Um, and then my other, you know, my concern's not- not about financial either because this sidewalk is really only going to cost me around $700, $750, so it's- it's not a financial thing on my end, or it's not me opposing the whole move to Des Moines master, um, transportation plan. My concern here is just that, I mean, you have to go pretty far away, um, to find other houses with sidewalks. Um, so my concern is just with a couple things, one is with the consistency, um, of something like this. You know, I mean, there's been a lot of new zoning laws passed to the city of Des Moines and, um, you know, I'm adapting to them as best as I can to make houses in accordance to the new zoning laws and one of the big things I keep on getting told is that, you know, you guys want houses that- in neighborhoods that are consistent with other houses in the neighborhood. I mean, you guys don't want a one-story house where the whole neighborhood is two-story houses and things like that because you guys want everything to be more consistent in the neighborhood. So that's kind of the one thing I- I want to get some input on from you guys, or what my concern is, is that you have this one house here, um, with the sidewalk and there's no other houses even remotely close that have a sidewalk. Um, you know, and from looking at the move to Des Moines, um, prioritized sidewalk gaps, this house in this neighborhood is a low-level priority. Now with move to Des Moines, it's a 25-year plan. So, you know, low-level priority on a 25-year plan, I'm thinking that it's going to be quite some time before this neighborhood sees any sidewalks being installed by the city. You know, so, you know, by the time that happens, you're going to have all these brand-new sidewalks and then you have this one sidewalk here that is, you know, maybe 15, 20 years old. And I just, you know, I- I don't know, maybe that's what you guys want to have, but I mean, I don't- I don't think that's really, you know, what you guys' vision is, but maybe it is. I mean, you know, and that's why I want to get some, you know, feedback and get my concerns out to you guys on- on something like this, is just, you know, how the overall timing of this and the look of this is going to, um, you know, happen with the city of Des Moines on- on a house like this where it's going to be quite some time before other sidewalks get put in. You know, to me, I think it'd make a lot more sense to forego this one because it's not really a gap, you know, I mean, there's no other sidewalks even close to this, so I wouldn't really define this as a- as filling a gap with this one sidewalk here, this 50-foot sidewalk here. So, uh, to me, I think it's something that, um, you know, could be flexible on this here and leave this to, um, have sidewalks installed whenever all the rest of the sidewalks get installed in the city. Um, so that's- that's what I'm asking you guys here, is just to have some flexibility on this here, um, you know, because that's what it says on the, you know, page one of the Move to Des Moines paperwork, it says that, uh, you know, it's not a rigid plan. So that's what it says about Move to Des Moines, that's not a rigid plan, so I'm asking maybe for some flexibility here because I think that would be the best thing for this neighborhood.
Okay.
So that- that's my- that's my point on, um, all this right now.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the commission from Mr. Duran? I'm looking to see if there are any hands up here. Um, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in, uh, online who would like to speak in favor of this proposal?
Don't see any, Jan.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there anyone in the audience who like- who has concerns, who wants to express their concerns about this proposal? Okay.
No hands.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any either, okay? Um, all right. So it's time to close the public hearing. Commission, time for discussion. Once again, I'm hoping we get the sidewalk committee, um, up and running soon, uh, but, because this is a common issue that we run into, so discussion.
Hi, this is Francis here, uh, speaking and I'm- and I, as you said, this is a common, uh, issue that's come up and- and my point of view is, I don't know if anyone else is to agree with me, I think that expecting him to put in a sidewalk, there may be a couple of decades when his neighbors put in sidewalks, if and when that happens, is asking a lot. He would be the only one on this, uh, in the neighborhood on that block with a paved sidewalk, who knows, uh, could be a decade or two. So I would grant his request, uh, that's my opinion, I'd like to hear other people, and I would also like the volunteer to be on the sidewalk committee. We've discussed this with the AARP and, uh, they are also supporting this, but we think it should be, uh, done on a block-by-block basis rather than individually.
Okay.
Parcels.
Thanks Francis, and thanks for volunteering to be on the committee. Other reactions to Francis' comment?
Um, this is Abby. I- I agree with, um, both of you. I would like some resolution on this soon since this comes up on a, um, for almost every single meeting for the last few months, it seems. Again, I've said this before, I support the Move DSM, I support, uh, getting sidewalks in all of Des Moines as much as it is possible and, um, so I'm really split on this because I do feel like there's- there's no other impediments to putting a sidewalk in here, but I do agree with Francis that it does seem a little silly to ask somebody to put in a sidewalk where there may not be sidewalks for the rest of the neighborhood for 10, 20 years. So again, I guess I- I'm hoping for some further resolution from the sidewalk committee and beyond that. So yeah, I'd like to hear what other people think.
Okay, thanks Abby. Other reactions?
Madam Chair, this is Johnny Alcevar. I also share the same concerns. We see this on a regular basis, it seems like it's every meeting that we get one of these requests. The reasonings vary. We hear all kinds of reasoning, not specific to this, um, one case, but we do need to figure out a way to move forward that recognizes the importance of Move DSM. And, um, you know, as, uh, as some of you mentioned, it doesn't make sense, um, for this house because there's nothing else on the block, but if we- if we follow that pattern, then we're just never going to get sidewalk, uh, until the act- until the city goes through and puts in the sidewalk. So, um, I just want to give a little background to why I consistently vote no on this request, just because I feel like whenever we have something that comes through us, um, it's an opportunity to make the existing gaps, um, a little bit smaller.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
Hey Jan, this is Rocky. I think Johnny makes a good point. My hope as a commission and as a board that we stay consistent until the committee has an opportunity to get together and make a recommendation and we agree as a whole. I would hate to see that, you know, one meeting we're- we're with the applicant and the next meeting we're with staff and we're inconsistent in what we do. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you Rocky. So Francis, I think, do you want to make a formal motion? I mean, I think you kind of said that, but go ahead, please.
Yes, I make a formal motion, we accept the, uh, request, the granted exception, uh, for petitioner, uh, Jason Duran.
Okay. Uh, Tyler?
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Johnny Alcevar?
No.
Dory Bryles?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
And Abby Chungis?
No.
The motion carries 10-2.
Thank you. All right, we are on item number three, request from Des Moines Public Schools, represented by Darrell Girstorff, uh, on 2450 Forest Avenue, for the review and approval of a preliminary plot Drake Community Stadium at Drake University for subdivision of a 4.609 acre lot for the stadium. Bert?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Ross, planner for the city of Des Moines. Uh, the item before you has two parts, uh, the first part A is approval of the preliminary plat, which would allow creation of the 4.609 acre parcel for the stadium, and then part
And then part B is the site plan. And they have requested three type-two design alternatives to that site plan for the stadium. Just a little background information. The site is located on the north side of Forest Avenue, kind of just to the east, I'm sorry, to the west of 24th Street and to the east of the NAP Center. The site was recently before you when they rezoned it to the P2 district. This map here is still showing the previous zoning districts. They haven't been updated since that was rezoned a week ago today. And also, this project went to the Board of Adjustment yesterday and obtained the conditional use approval for a assembly and entertainment use in the P2 district. So the use has already been established. So tonight, the board or the commission is discharged with determining whether they meet the criteria needed to grant the three type-two design alternatives for the site plan. The site plan is about 30 pages long, so I'm just going to show you the, I guess, the most critical sheets. This layout here shows how the stadium would be placed on the property. And this is also a good demonstration of two of the three type-two design alternatives needed. The first being that they're exceeding the 70% impervious, which means they're paving or putting structures over 70, more than 70% of the land. The P2 district requires properties to provide approximately 30% open space. But in this case, they are not able to achieve that just given the site constraints. And also the fact that the artificial turf is considered an impervious surface because there is a membrane underneath that collects the stormwater. And this also shows the second design alternative needed, which is setbacks. So if you look here at the northeast corner, they're not providing the minimum required 15-foot setbacks from property lines. And I believe there's some ticket booths around the perimeter that aren't meeting setbacks as well. Then the third design alternative is best shown on the building elevations. In this zoning district, they're required to build their stadium as a civic building type, which requires the building to have 12% transparency, which in this case, it was hard to meet that 12% transparency, which is window space, just given the nature of the stadium. And it's not really, I guess, wouldn't be functional to put windows on the back sides of the bleachers or whatnot. So those are the three design alternatives that are requested. Also, in your packet was the staff recommendation. And the staff recommendation contains the criteria that the commission must base its decision on tonight. I know if you, when you hear from neighbors, you might hear concerns about this isn't the right thing for the Des Moines Public Schools to do and whatnot. But that's really not something, anything you can base your decision on. The decision has to be based on the criteria established in the city code. So as I've alluded to, our recommendation is for approval of part A, which is the plat, and then part B, which is approval of the site plan. And the site plan would just have two conditions recommended by staff. The first being that it must be in compliance with all administrative review comments from the Permit and Development Center. And then two, they need to provide a shared parking agreement in accordance with section 135-6.5.4 of the city code in order to provide the minimum number of required off-street parking spaces. And really, number two would go without saying, but we were just putting it in there for assurance that they do know they need to comply with our requirements for off-street parking.
Okay.
So the consent map, we didn't get any comment cards back, but I did get this one email today from a neighbor with some concerns. And I will leave it up here. But I guess now would be a good time to ask any questions of me, if you, if you have any.
Questions for Bert?
Bert, I have a question. This is Johnny. So the site plan will meet the minimum required off-street parking. We just need the agreement to make sure that if they, you know, if Drake ever decides to sell a lot, their agreement will be there in place. Is that right?
Yeah, that's exactly right. The, yeah, the agreement would have, since they would be using parkings, the stadium's owned by the Des Moines Public Schools and the parking lots are owned by Drake University. So that parking agreement is needed to ensure that those spaces will always be provided, even if Drake would sell the lot. Thank you.
Any other questions for Bert? Okay, is the applicant online? Please state your name and address. Okay, I see a hand. Matt Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. This is Matt Cohen with RDG Planning and Design, 301 Grand Avenue. I'm the project manager on the project. There are representatives from Des Moines Public Schools and Drake on the line as well. And they are Bill Good and Daryl Gierstorf from DMPS, and Michelle Huggins and Ryan Arnold from Drake University. We also have the landscape architect from RDG as well, and that's Jason Bloom on the call. So we want to just highlight a few points. And Bert, I think I'll have you pull up that slide 36 again. So we just wanted to highlight these few points related to the specific items before the commission this evening. So starting with the impervious surface. As Bert mentioned, the synthetic playing field, which accounts for about 2.4 of our 4.6 acres of the site, does not qualify as impervious. However, it does slow rainwater down fairly significantly. It's a 45-minute time of, minutes of concentration related to stormwater. And to give you a comparison, that relates to five minutes for concrete. So though it is still an impervious surface and we are managing all of our calculations accordingly for stormwater detention, it is an improvement over, say, a building roof or a concrete surface. So I wanted to point that out regarding item B1. Item B2 relating to property setbacks. We are using this entire site on this urban stadium. It is contextual to the area. Forest Avenue in both directions includes zero setback conditions as well as both 24th and 25th Street to the south. And of course, we all know University Avenue is similar. That's a little further out. But as I mentioned, in the immediate area, Forest Avenue does include zero setbacks in each direction of the site. The, there is really no harm to the east. It's a postal facility, post office, used to that direction. So minimal setback in that direction is really not of significant consequence. And we also want to point out that, as you can see here in this illustration, the hashed areas where it shows concrete scoring around the stadium. There, the stadium has a really unique and, I think, very cool condition where the, the public sidewalk and the interior concourse circulation are right up to one another, creating this blending of that experience. And when you're on the south side of the stadium, the field is sunken about 15 feet. So even from outside the stadium, you could, and it has this incredible transparency. And that'll come up again as we look at item 12 with the, or excuse me, item three, with the 12% transparency considerations. Also want to point out, as it relates to setbacks, that to the north, where we do have several residential properties, we do have a 27-foot setback for our buildings. The only structures that are up to the property line or near the property line are a fence, ornamental, excuse me, the fence around the facility, as well as the scoreboard and some netting that keeps balls from sailing off into Clark Street. So then along the east, our concessions building has about an eight-foot setback from the edge of the site, which is that building to the northeast. And our bleachers, which are split into an upper and lower deck, the upper deck is about, in its most extreme condition, is about seven feet back from the property line with our structure within the setback, the columns that support that structure. So we're really limited on the east to a zero setback condition of the very small, approximately 14-foot by 14-foot ticket booth that's on the southeast corner of that condition. Otherwise, not, not really an issue on the south side. No buildings are within that 15-foot setback, only the supports for the netting for that end of the field. Another thing I wanted to point out is some of the dimensions of this facility are also related to creating a balanced dual-home field condition on this field. So there's 2,000 seats on each side of the stadium. And that did help generate our overall width of the stadium and really will be a benefit to the function and form of it as well. So I'll move on to item three related to transparency. And Bert, I think slide 27 would be a good one to look at for this. So it's a little difficult to see here. And maybe, Bert, if you wouldn't mind zooming in on the lower plan, or excuse me, elevation? Yeah, right there would do, even if you got a little bit of the ticket booth. There you go. So, so we have an ornamental fence around the south and east sides of the stadium. And that makes it a little tough to read in this elevation. But the grandstands are actually split in two. And there's a nine-foot gap that runs the entire length at, at the sidewalk level. Again, supporting that idea that you're looking in and through this, this open-air site, the open-air stadium site. So it is very transparent. Of the overall length, for instance, on this, this east side, we have just 84 feet of actual building frontage and out of the 465 feet. And then the bleachers are about 200 feet. And again, they're elevated, so it has that transparency down at the pedestrian level. And that's true on the other side of the building as well. Less significant as it relates to the item tonight, but, but that is the nature of the stands here. The same is true on the, the north, where the entire space between the concessions restroom building and the locker room structure is the open field. So we have a similar condition where the actual buildings are, are a minimal portion of the overall frontage of the building. So all in all, we think the spirit of the transparency of this, this site is certainly met through those, those means. With that, we'd just like to thank the city staff for their ongoing and thorough review of these items and their recommendation for the approval of this plating and type-two design alternatives this evening. We also thank the Neighborhood Association and the area neighbors who have participated and have invited us to participate and attend their, their neighborhood meetings over the last three months. And also like to thank Drake University. Drake has done some neighborhood canvassing, has been in touch with over 30 area neighbors in this process with some door-to-door canvassing, which has been really valuable to the discussion as well. So this evening, we do request your support in granting these items. And with that, we'll, we'll take a pause and we'll look forward to questions and other comments.
Thank you, Matt. Questions for Matt, for Matt, from the commission? Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this proposal? In favor of this proposal? Please raise your hand or star nine on your phone.
I don't see any, Jan.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who has concerns? Anyone who would like to speak and express some concerns about this proposal? Raise your hand or star nine on your phone. I see a hand. Okay, we have a hand by Dan Pardok.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, please state your name and your address, please.
Excellent, thank you. My name is Dan Pardok. I live at 4118 Lower Beaver Road in Des Moines. And first of all, I'm hoping that I can get an answer to my question as I move along. If not, I completely understand. First of all, I'm really curious that we are looking at 3A, the review and approval of a preliminary plat. And it's called Drake Community Stadium at Drake University Plat 1. And I'm curious if that's a slip and someone mistakenly calling that because I've always thought it was called the DMPS Community Stadium. So I'm hoping that that can get resolved. And if it's, if it needs to go back through the commission again because it's, excuse me, the board again because it's been misnamed, then that's what we need to do because we're talking about, according to the paperwork here, the Drake Community Stadium at Drake University Plat 1. Also looking forward to letter B here, numbers one, two, and three. I feel like the cart has been put before the horse on this one. We all know that this stadium is already under construction right now and the hole's already getting dug out. And I assume it's dug out according to the plans that we're looking at right now. So I'm curious as to why we're here talking about these three requests to do something contrary to city regulations when construction's already begun? What truly can happen if this board says no to this request? It just seems like it's one of those things like we're, we're, it's better to ask for forgiveness rather than for permission in the first place. I'd also like to touch on something that was discussed earlier about a parking agreement. I know that there's, there's been documentation that there are enough parking spaces within the, within the distance from the stadium to meet the requirement. However, I know those are Drake stadiums. So I'm curious what's going to happen if there are Drake vehicles parked there over the weekend for a Friday night football game? And what kind of assurances that DMPS can expect from Drake that there will be enough open spots in those parking lots to allow for people to come to the game and still meet that requirement that they've talked about earlier? And so as we wrap up, I do find it interesting that at every hearing that I've gone to, there has to be a preamble that says something along the lines that we heard tonight. You may have heard from your neighbors that this isn't the right thing for DMPS to do, but you have to vote on the facts. I totally agree that you do need to vote on the facts on this. And I hope you'll take that into consideration. But I do find it interesting that there always has to be that speech made because I think we all know that there's quite a few people out there, including over 7,000 that side of a Tijon, saying, we want to vote on this for the 15 million in save funds. So I appreciate your time. I hope you do the right thing tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Do, could staff or is there someone who could help answer these questions? Specifically?
Madam Chair, this is Judy Parks Cruz, the legal counsel for the commission. I can address one of them. Mr. Pardok, you had asked about the naming of the site plan and how it appears on the agenda in front of you. I can tell you, having seen site plans for various meetings, that is a name that is not tied to ownership. And how they chose that as perhaps identifying it as a joint project with Drake, I'm not sure. But it is, it is not signifying ownership in this particular instance either. instance either. So that is the name that was selected to identify it.
Thank you, Judy.
Judy, this is Bert. I think his question was that the name on the plat doesn't match the name that was on the public notices that we mailed out. The plat that was submitted calls it the DMPS Community Stadium at Drake University, Plat 1. And as Mr. Pardock said, the notice is called it the Drake Community Stadium at Drake University, Plat 1. I'm not sure where staff got that discrepancy, but I believe that the plat name isn't what's important. What's important is the plat. I believe the plat name could change at any point between now and whenever city council approves the final plat.
Yes, because this is just a preliminary, and they have changed over the course of projects in my experience. So it may be ending up something completely different in the end.
Right, thank you, Judy.
Bert, are you able to answer some of the other specific questions he had?
Please forgive me, what were those? I heard his comment about the name and the how he would like the commission to take the petition into account. I'm sorry, what was the other question?
Parking, and he made, he had a concern about parking.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, the site plan will have to comply with our parking requirements, and a 4,000-seat stadium, as what's being proposed, would require provision of at least 667 off-street parking spaces. There was a traffic analysis done as part of the rezoning process, and I think I showed that to you when it came in for the rezoning. But this parking analysis looked at all of the parking spaces within the quarter-mile and further out. But our city code requires the 667 parking stalls to be within 750 feet of the site, which we do believe they will be able to achieve. And Mr. Pardock, if you wanted to ask any other questions, now I can try to answer those?
Well, I think we can have, thanks, Bert. We can have Matt Cohen, when he can answer, I think, some of these questions when he comes back. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak, has concerns about this proposal? Anyone else who'd like to express some concerns? Please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So Matt, you have a chance to address the concerns.
Sure, on the parking item, there will be a more detailed parking agreement ultimately. But currently, there is a 28E agreement that's fairly broad and comprehensive between DMPS and Drake. That's a recorded agreement that includes the use of parking, which, as Bert alluded to, there's a 667 off-street parking count requirement for the site. We are currently even using the shared parking model. Over, we have, there's 100 spaces beyond what's required in our current calculations. So that's all trending well. And then in terms of the traffic study, that went into a little bit more detail about, you know, a sold-out game and how many trips that would create and where that parking would occur. And they looked at a quarter-mile and then a half-mile radius beyond the site and found that there to be, found there to be plenty of parking to accommodate up to 14, just over 1,400 cars for that type of sellout-type event. So it looks like we're going to be well within the ability to accommodate those through the shared parking agreement between Drake and DMPS. And otherwise, that's, again, that's continuing to go through the site plan review process. If we find there to be any issues with that, we'll find ourselves before this commission again. So I would just go back to the, you know, the three items in the plating on tonight's agenda and, you know, request your support. And if there's any further questions for me, we'd be happy to answer those as well on those items.
Okay. Questions from the commission? Okay, I'm not seeing or hearing any. All right, it's time to close a public hearing. Discussion from the commission. Someone kick it off.
Hello, Madam Chair, this is Greg Watier. I think these requests are very reasonable and make sense for this type of project on this site. I think the solutions are adequate and good, so I would be in support of this. Others have thoughts? Please chime in.
Okay, thank you. Other comments?
Madam Chair, this is Bert with the city. If I may, if somebody would happen to make a motion to go with a staff recommendation, I might suggest that they revise it to say the DMPS Community Stadium at Drake University rather than as it's worded as Drake.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, this is Greg again. I'm not hearing anyone wanting to speak. I'll make a motion to move staff recommendations to approve the type-two design alternatives and also in the Part A, change the name to the DMPS. I apologize what the exact name is. Help me out, Bert.
It was, if it pops up, it was the DMPS.
Right there. Yep.
Okay, we have a motion. Tyler?
Johnny Alsovar?
Yes.
Dory Brows?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes, ton A, no one B.
Abby Chungus?
Yes.
And Rocky Spazato?
No.
So the motion carries 11-1.
Okay, thanks, Tyler. We're ready for item number four. Campbell's Holdings, represented by Eric Campbell at 3104 East Court Avenue. Bert?
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the commission, Bert Dross, planner for the city of Des Moines. The request is for a rezoning of a property from an N5 district to an I1 district. The subject property is kind of out of sight. It is located just to the south of, I believe it's, I'm sorry, blanking on the name, that goes along the south side of the state fairgrounds, Dean Avenue, but it's just to the south of that block. You have to go down this narrow street along East 15th or East 31st Street and then cross the railroad tracks, and then you come to this property here. So the property is zoned N5. As I mentioned, they are wanting to rezone it to an I industrial district, which would help, would be the first step they need to take in remedying a zoning violation. Here are a few site photos. This is driving south down southeast 31st Street. You can see it's a gravel road. Once you cross the railroad tracks, you get to their property. And you can see there's an existing single-family house, and then they have an outdoor storage lot on the property. This is looking more southwest at the storage yard. And just going to provide a little background information on how we got here tonight. So this is the 2018 aerial photograph. You can see the existing single-family house was right here. Then we fast-forward a year to the 2019 aerial, and they had cleared the trees and put down some gravel. So when that was discovered, that they did that without the site plan, they were sent a notice of zoning violation back in March of this year. And so the first step in remedying the zoning violation is to seek a rezoning to an I district, and then if they're successful with the rezoning, then they would have to do the site plan. And here are just a few more photos that were included with that notice of zoning Here's a better view of the zoning map. You can see the N5 property here, which is a neighborhood district. It's mostly surrounded by industrial already. There is some flood district immediately to the south and to the east. And then here's the Plan DSM land use plan, which calls for this area to, for this area to be an industrial designation. So staff has recommended approval of the rezoning. We just had recommended one condition, and that be that there should be no residential use upon the property, which means that if the rezoning is granted, they would have to stop using the house for residential use. And then it also goes without saying that they would have to bring the storage yard into compliance with the site plan, and that would be the final step at remedying your zoning violation. We did get one comment card back. I'm not sure, we couldn't figure out which property this is related to, but they are in support. And then here is the consent map. Like I said, we weren't sure which property to color in for that comment card. But that concludes my presentation. Did anybody have any questions for me?
Questions for Bert?
Bert, this is Johnny Alsovar. I have a question. If the rezoning, it's approved, and the site plan has to come in for approval, will there be a tree mitigation plan for those trees that were removed?
Yes, I believe they would, and we would have to use the canopy method for calculating how many trees would be needed. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bert. Is the applicant online? Please state your name and address. Okay, I see a hand up.
Yep, this is Brett Osborne. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, please. Your address?
Yep, 974 73rd Street, Suite 16, West Des Moines, Iowa, 50265. I'm counsel for Campbell's Holdings LLC, the owner of the real estate. May I proceed with some comments?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, yes.
Yep, so again, Brett Osborne here. I'm counsel for the owner. A little bit of history on how we got here, a little bit more than what Bert had, is this property has always been zoned M1, and during the 20, I think it was the 2019 redistrict theme, the consultant that did that work selected this property to be rezoned as N5. And the owner at the time was unaware of that process or unaware of the effect of the rezoning. Not being aware of the rezoning, we, the title holder, proceeded with the work that we were doing on it, under the impression that it was an M1 district. So the reason for the violations was not because we were doing something inconsistent with the zoning of the property. It was simply this property got rezoned to an N5 during that redistrict theme. It has always been M1. It is sandwiched in between two railroads. We also purchased East Court Avenue, the street just to the south of this property. So that is also part of this entire parcel now as well, and it is zoned I1, and it was previously M1 before the redistrict theme. So it's all one parcel at this point, and we're an operation that's associated with the state fairgrounds. This uses, I guess, accessory to state fairgrounds operations of the business. So that's how we got here today, was a result of this redistrict theme. And so we're simply asking for the rezoning so we can restore the zoning that had been previously and historically been the property zoning to get it back to where we were pre-2019.
Okay. All right, anything else, Mr. Osborne?
Not at this time.
Okay, questions from Mr. Osborne, from the commission?
Yeah, Brett, this is Rocky. Are you in agreement with staff?
I am. Yes, our client is in agreement with staff.
Any other questions for Mr. Osborne? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this proposal? Please raise your hand or star nine on your phone. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Is there anyone who'd like to speak who has concerns about this proposal? You'd like to express concerns? Please raise your hand or star nine. Okay?
Not seeing any.
I'm not seeing any. Thanks, Tyler. Okay, it's time to close a public hearing. Discussion from the commission.
This is Francis speaking. I have staff recommendation.
Thanks, Francis. Any other comments that anyone wants to make? Okay, we have a motion. Tyler?
Johnny Alsovar? Dory Brows?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungus?
Yes.
And Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Motion carries 12-0.
Thanks, Tyler. Now we're ready for item number seven. Item number seven. Which is a request, the applicant, property is doing business at South Des Moines Vet Center, represented by Jeremy Byer. The subject property title holders are Joseph and Deborah Madonia. Jason?
Chairman, members of the commission, Jason Van Essen with the city's planning staff. We'll go ahead and show, excuse me, an aerial identifying the subject property. It's on the north side of Army Post Road at the intersection with Southwest 6. You can see it highlighted. Most of the property is currently zoned MX2. There is a small part zoned N3A, which is a one-household residential zoning district. It's part of the request to support the rezoning. The land use plan would need to be amended. This map identifies the northern part of the property as being where the land use map amendment would need to take place. I would highlight that this is located in a community node that centered on Southwest 9th Street. And Plan DSM, the city's comprehensive plan, we have some kind of greater expectations or allowances for density in our nodes. That's covered a little bit in the written staff report, and I'll highlight that when we get to it. It's an aerial showing the site, properties around it. Tonight, we are just considering a rezoning request. We are not taking action upon a site plan. But when we do have these requests, we ask and encourage the applicant to provide us some sort of sketch or concept of what it is they're trying to achieve. This is a, was provided by the applicant. As noted in the agenda, this is...
As noted in the agenda, this, they're looking to do a veterinarian clinic. This is the concept they have currently for how they would develop the site with a building at the intersection of Army Post and Southwest Six with parking and stormwater retention to the north and then a outdoor dog run to the west of the building. Concepts are what the building would look like. In your packet, you received a copy of the staff reports. It's provided the applicant as well. We did our normal analysis, looked at the future land use map and Plan DSM, city's comprehensive plan is the basis for our recommendations. Provided a summary of the different future land use map designations. Noted that community node designation for the area. In the report, we also mentioned the separation requirement for an outdoor dog run. This, the concept that they're showing would require relief from the zoning board adjustment. The project could move forward without that. And so it's something that we recognize that that's an element they would like to have with the property or with their development. But at this time, it would not be allowed. The avenue for getting relief doesn't, isn't available until after the rezoning would take place. They would have the right, if the property is rezoned to the MX three district, to seek a variance to that 200 foot separation requirement from the zoning board adjustment. We are recommending approval. We have a couple of conditions. And in short, what we're, what we're suggesting here is that we want to limit uses to those allowed in the MX two district. The site's currently zoned MX two with the addition of the animal service category with, with the allowances for boarding to allow their vet operations to be included in that list of things that can be allowed. There are other uses in MX three that are a little more either auto or commercial intense allowed or kind of light industrialish uses that we don't think would be a good fit here. We also have a condition there limiting the type of accessory structures allowed to those that would be permitted in the MX two district. The applicant has indicated that they're supportive of the staff recommendation. This is the response map. We sent notice to everybody within 250 feet of the property. Falls within that kind of graded shade area. At the time the map was produced, we had a couple of cards back in support. Have a total of four cards to show you. All four of them are in support.
Okay.
With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission might have for staff.
Any questions for Jason at this time? Okay, is the applicant here? Please state your name and address. I see a hand, okay?
Corey, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Okay.
Good evening, staff, members of the council. My name is Corey Sharp. I'm an architect with FTH Design, helping the owners of this property in their attempt to try and get a new veterinary center built on this site.
Okay, and your address, Mr. Sharp?
I apologize, thank you. Our office is located at six oh four East Grand Avenue in Des Moines.
Thank you.
Yep, so the owners have owned this site for a couple of years prior to it being rezoned to MX two. They've always had the intention of building a new facility on this site. Their current vet center practice is just a couple of blocks west of this site at Southwest Ninth and Army Post. And they are rapidly outgrowing that facility. So they're looking forward to trying to develop this, this parcel here. Jason, if you wouldn't mind going back to the site plan. Just wanted to touch on a couple of brief things. So the existing site is a home of an old mobile home park. So there are some existing asphalt paved areas. As mentioned by Jason, on the site is also a residence located on the northeast corner of that site that is also owned by the property owner. As part of this project, that home would be demolished to make room for a detention area and new parking lot. Right there in the center is a, I believe it was an old utility shed. That no longer exists and it's, and it's where it sits there. That's, that's since been removed. But essentially what we're trying to do is meet all of the requirements of the current zoning MX two while being able to build this vet center facility. So we're trying to align with the storefront guidelines laid out in the DSM plan. The building sits up on the property lines. We've got rear parking. All of those things we're, we're trying to align with as best we can. And so we're really just looking to try and get this rezoned so we can build this facility on this site. We understand that there are hurdles ahead of us to try and get the board of adjustment to approve the exterior dog run. And we look forward to those discussions as well. I would be happy to answer any questions for any of you this evening. I believe we also have Trent Smith on the line. He's from McClure Engineering that might be able to answer any site or civil related questions as well as the property owner, Jeremy Byer. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Questions for the applicant?
Hello Corey, this is Greg Watier. Are you in agreement with staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions for the applicant? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this proposal? Please raise your hand or star nine on your phone. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Is there anyone who'd like to voice concerns? Express some concerns about this proposal? Please raise your hand.
Are you star nine if you're on a cell phone?
Or star nine if you're on a phone? If you'd like to express a concern about this proposal?
Not seeing any, Ms. Sharp.
Okay, thank you. It's time to close the public hearing. Discussion from the commission.
Jan, this is Rocky. I'll move staff.
Thanks Rocky. We have a motion, Tyler.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungus?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Johnny Alzovar?
Yes.
Dory Bries?
Yes.
And Jan Fried?
Yes.
That motion carries twelve zero.
Okay, thank you Tyler. We are on item number eight.
Can everybody see the screen? This is Eric Lundey, senior city planner.
Yeah.
Item eight.
Oh, go ahead.
Christine McVicker, owner at thirty eight forty eight River Oaks Drive, is requesting two different type two design alternatives for construction of a new house type B dwelling. One is waiver of the public sidewalk installation requirement. And the second is to allow a story height of the upper story to be 11 feet, which is in excess of two feet over the maximum allowable story height of nine. A, I believe a one and a half story or one and a half foot would, would be within a type one alternative, but two feet puts it into a type two alternative. This is the subject property on River Oaks Drive, just west of Muskogee Avenue. And as you can see, it backs onto the railroad as you get towards the Raccoon River Plain. Pictures of the site currently, right now, there's a lot of piled, piled up soil down the street. You can, this is to give you a sense of the slope of the street in that location. The application form on record. This is the immediate, the proposed site plan. Let's zoom in a little bit so you can see it here. So you can see the footprint of the building and the location of the, of the driveway entrance. I'm going to zoom back out. I'm not going to get too much into these. I believe that the designer for the applicant is with us tonight to be able to point out the finer points of the design of the building. Again, when you look at the upper story height, it's measured floor to ceiling. And once it, once it exceeds that nine feet. The other thing about this is there's multiple levels. And maybe the designer will speak to the, how some of it sits kind of halfway in between the other levels in terms of making it a little bit difficult to interpret how story is, is, is looked at. But it's based on Article three in chapter one thirty five. And these are the elevations. And I'll probably leave it on this when I get done because I believe this will be where they're making a certain point on the. This is the staff report. Staff is, is not supportive of the waiver of the sidewalk. I think we've been consistent with this based on the move DSM prioritization and, and comments from traffic engineering. So we wouldn't be recommending in favor of that waiver. But we are recommending approval of the type two design alternative to allow the 11 foot floor height on the upper level. We did get a written opposition from a neighbor. I put all, they've actually given us an attachment that I've included after, at the end of the presentation. So if, if and when they get up to speak, it'll be available for them to, to walk through when they do that. That would be right here. Again, it wasn't a signed petition, so we didn't put it on the map. But we did get that email communication.
Okay.
Questions at this point? And like I said, I think, I believe that the Mr. Vleger, Philip Vleger is here to present this on the behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
And as the designer.
Are there questions for Eric at this time? Okay, it's time for the applicant. Please state your name and address. Okay, go ahead. We need to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Philip Vleger and as per Eric Lundey. And my office is at eleven sixty three twenty fourth street in Des Moines. And I'm the designer of the project and speaking for the applicant, Chris McVicker.
Okay, go ahead.
If we can maybe put up the, one of the last slides that Eric had up. He made reference to that. Yeah, that will, again, thank you, Madam Chair Kirsten and members of the council for us to have the opportunity to address you on this. We're, we have two issues here. One of them has already been approved, but we provided some documentation to demonstrate our, our attempts to comply with all the zoning regulations in the area when we, when we designed this house because we were very concerned about it. We respect this area very much. I live south of Grand myself and Chris McVicker is very excited about moving to this area and is making a considerable investment to do so on many levels. So we took this very seriously and we looked it up in the beginning, what the requirements were. It's a difficult site because there's a little over 13 feet of slope side to side. And we have over 20 feet as well, more than that, even 30 feet of slope front to back. So it's a little difficult. But what we ended up doing is designing a house that had literally six levels. But if you start with the premise of a two story house, you can see on this diagram what the size of the house would be. With a first floor of nine foot and a second floor of eight foot, that's what this represents, which is literally what the right side or the west side of the house is. It actually has a nine foot ceiling. So that was kind of the starting point, which aligns with both the spirit and the direct nature of the zoning in the area. This, this little drawing here shows if we would have just made this a standard two story house per, with the five 12 roof pitch, that indeed it would be over four, four feet taller than our existing house. So we really commend the commission and the staff, I should say the staff, on coming to the recommendation that this house is in compliance height wise, even though it's kind of confusing, as Eric said, because there are multiple levels here, literally six. But if you look at this image, you can see, if you do the math, this house actually takes up less vertical volume than we would if we did a standard two story house, which is an accepted type. So that's kind of our comments basically about the house itself. Chris owns a company called Mark Chris Modern Design. She specializes in doing modern houses. And we got involved in design, helping her design this project. And she takes it very seriously what the neighborhood is all about. And we tried to create scale items, some, some real shadow items volumetrically and material wise, everything that really works with this entire neighborhood. One of the values of River Oaks Drive is the absolute diversity of the housings within the neighborhood. People drive down the street particularly for that reason. And there's all architectural styles from mid century, early, late 1800 houses, all different types of roof configurations, shed, flat, gable, hip. And so there, it's really part of the value of the neighborhood. And we're just kind of adding to that. And that's one of the things that Chris McVicker really brought her to this area. So she's creating her own piece that, that represents some of the things that are of interest to her. And that's part of what this whole street has been about. And that's part of the beauty of it. So we, we very much worked within the limits of the height requirements. And again, that's demonstrated here. The, the second, I, and again, we thank the staff for approving it on that level and that, that they didn't see any issues with the height of the house. One of the, kind of the funny things, interesting things is, is when they state that we had more than nine foot of height on the floors, it was because we actually dug into the ground or actually met the ground as that ground goes to the back of the house. So if you look at the front of the house, it's actually equal to a house that has a nine and an eight foot floor heights. But as you move to the back, those levels actually go down in elevation and that's what creates the extra height. So that, it was kind of confusing. But again, we, we are happy that the staff figured that out and, and, and approved that. The second issue has to do with the sidewalks. And if we can go to a site plan of that area, if we can do that, I know, I know Eric had that up. Yeah, keep going back. I think he had that earlier, one of the early slides. Maybe one more back, go back in, even a little further. Remembered, I don't know if Eric remembers where that was. Remembered, I don't know if Eric remembers where that was. I think it was before this.
This would be the site plan and then this is the actual drawing. So is it part of your drawings still?
I apologize. I mean, the, the site photograph.
Oh, the aerial.
Yes, aerial.
Yeah. It's very first slide.
There you go. Yeah, there you go. Okay. Now, when we look at this, we can see that even within this slide, there's virtually zero sidewalks. And I've been involved in projects throughout the country where walkability has been a really big issue. And so I can appreciate the desire to put sidewalks in there. However, in this neighborhood, there are none. And so we think that adding one sidewalk, when there is no current plan on when the other sidewalks would have to be added, that in fact, it'll look disjointed and like it'll, it'll even play up more that there's not other sidewalks. And to the best of my knowledge, there's no plan that requires real implementation of sidewalks within this area for the foreseeable future. So we're asking for, to have relief there based on the fact that there just isn't any precedent. And we, we really think that having one sidewalk in this entire area is more disruptive than, than beneficial. So that's kind of our thoughts on that. So we, we ask your consideration there and for you to vote that we would have relief of putting that sidewalk in. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for the applicant? From the commission? Any questions? Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this, of the applicant, in favor of this proposal? Please raise your hand or star nine on your phone. Okay, I'm not seeing any.
I do know that Mr. Gosnell is on, I don't think he's raised his hand, but.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay, saw a hand, okay. Please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, please state your name and address.
Sure, David Gosnell, and I am at 3901 River Oaks Drive.
Okay.
So Mr. Lundie, if you could pull the, pull my analysis or letter up.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Gosnell, are you, are you speaking in favor of this proposal or you have concerns?
Concerns.
Okay, all right.
So I'd like to make a few points. I assume that the commission has already reviewed my, my letter, but I'd like to, I guess, just make a few points. As Mr. Vleger said, the, the house does exceed the allowable height for the type that is allowed in Zone N3A, which was approved by type one. And then also here today, we're considering, you're considering the type two design alternative for the floor-to-floor height. The, looking at the surrounding area, there may be, there's some diversity of building type, of one-story versus two-story houses, styles, ages and roof types, but it's much less than Mr. Vleger describes, especially in the immediate vicinity of this site. If you can zoom into these photos of the 15 houses that are within a 250-foot radius of the site, there's only one two-story house. And of all the other remaining houses, they're one-story. And the ceiling heights, which, which would equal the floor heights in a one-story house, all appear to be eight-foot, looking at the exterior. Same thing with the two-story house that's, that's also within this vicinity. So there are other parts of River Oaks Drive that have different house styles, but that's a couple of blocks away. So the height of the house and the floor-to-floor heights are quite out of character for this area. And increasing the floor height above what's allowed by the planning regulations really exacerbates that issue. I would say Mr. Vleger's analysis to compare the design to what is allowed makes some assumptions of, of, you know, sort of maximizing everything allowable. You know, roof pitch is, is higher than it, than, than sort of what could be done. If one were, were really trying to fit into the neighborhood, you know, those aren't the assumptions that I think that, that a person would make. Again, the roof pitch isn't, isn't as low as it could be. And the floor heights, again, are much higher than are typical for the neighborhood. I would also go back to sort of the purpose for the design alternative process. Just reiterating that that's for, if there are conditions on the site that make it impractical or undesirable to meet the regulations, that a design alternative is to be pursued. And I, I, I haven't heard anything that, that really states why that's impractical or undesirable. All the other houses in the neighborhood that are existing and the one that was torn down to make room to, to build this one are very similar in eight-foot, eight-foot ceiling heights. And they sell quite regularly. The design alternative is also intended to recognize that alternative solutions may provide equal or better implementation of the regulations intended purpose. And again, I don't see how increasing the height makes us either fit into the neighborhood better or, or reduce the adverse impacts of, you know, blocking views of adjacent properties. So I respectfully request that the commission vote no on the type two design alternative. And if possible, I respectfully request that the type one staff alternative for the total building height be reconsidered.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Madam Chair, I did want to, this is Eric Lundie. I wanted to clarify, Mr. Gosnell indicated that the commission had these in advance and that isn't the case. We don't provide those. They, they provide them to staff so that they can be presented because we aren't able to share the screen. So they have to be shown to the commission in the confines of the hearing, basically. So I want to make sure he, there isn't anything else he wanted to point out.
Okay, let me think about that for a second. I think I, I think I hit the major points. I guess I misunderstood how that was going to be conveyed, but I think I hit all the major points. Thank you for, for giving me that opportunity.
Okay, well, thank you, because the commission may have questions for Mr. Gosnell. Any questions here? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak who has concerns about this proposal? Anyone else who wants to express concerns? Please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, the, the appellant gets a rebuttal. They've got their hand raised, but I don't see.
No, I know. I was seeing if there was anybody else.
Yep, I don't, I don't see any other raised hands.
All right. So we have the applicant. You have a chance to, to answer the questions, please.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Philip Vleger again. And while I respect David Gosnell's approach to this and the, the level of vigor and the completeness of his submittal, there are some things that are just off base. Number one, he mentioned that I stated that this was indeed taller than it would be if it was a two-story house. That is patently false. I showed on that diagram that this actually is about five to six foot shorter than if this were a standard two-foot house. Yeah, this diagram shows that. The dimension over to the right near the, near the roof, that shows if this house had a 512 pitch, which actually many of them in the neighborhood have greater than that. So if this 12, this house had a 512 pitch, which is, which is permitted within the guidelines, doesn't matter if it's on the high end, there's always a scale, but it's 512, this house would be four to five feet taller than it is now. So his, his statement that this is blocking views is not accurate. So I just wanted to make that clear. We, we tried to be very concerned about the things that he brought forward and we too were very concerned about them. However, this house doesn't have height violation issues if we really go by the strictness of the nine and eight foot. Now, eight foot is the lowest any house is. There are some houses in the neighborhood within a block or two that are nine foot. I know that for certain because I have a friend that lives there and I've been in his house and it's nine foot and more in some areas. So there is a precedent for that. But the requirement state nine and nine can be used in this area. And we did nine and eight to show in this example. So while I appreciate Mr. Gosnell's desire to have the house appear as small as possible, we did take that into consideration and we tried to create shadow lines and, and we created a lot of what we call plasticity, which is where the, the form of the building has a lot of movement, to create a lot of shadow lines that would scale the property down. So we, we did try to take into consideration those items of scale and monumentality. And we appreciate the quaintness of the area as well as the, the homes that have a, a grander scale. And indeed, this street is recognized as a street of great diversity. Maybe within two or three houses, one can say that there are some uniformity, but there is, there is a lot of variation if one even goes two blocks. That's the main point I wanted to bring forward. We, we really did try to put effort to, to design something that responded to the neighborhood. And Chris McVicker, who is, who literally, again, is putting a major investment here. She's putting her money and her, you know, putting things, a lot of things behind this with the understanding that it will have reciprocal value over time. So, and I absolutely am certain that this will increase the valuation. As opposed to what David mentioned, there's no evidence of what he mentioned is true, that it will in any way depreciate the value. Conversely, the opposite will happen just due to the, due to the assessed valuation of the property. And there's all kinds of studies for that, that we can demonstrate that. So I, I can appreciate his concern. He lives across the street. As an architect, I hope he grows to actually maybe like the, the, the project as it starts to be built. I, I know what kind of work his firm does and it's consistent with the type of work that, that he is often involved in. So, you know, we want this house to be something that is appreciated by all the neighbors. And again, we respect this neighborhood tremendously. So I want Mr. Gosnell to know that we, we really did try to be responsive to issues of the neighborhood. And Chris McVicker, it was very, very important for her to better do her, do what she really, really enjoys and what really, really is meaningful to her, but at the same time, she wants to be a good neighbor. So she's hopeful that this house will, will eventually do both of those. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Questions from the commission for the applicant? Any other questions? Okay, it's time to close the public hearing. Discussion from the commission. We have a couple of issues here. Discussion from the commission.
This is Francis. I guess I'll lead off. I hate to be a one-note Johnny, but I do, I would approve the waiver of the sidewalk to be consistent. And I hope this issue could be resolved at the beginning of 2021. As to the diversity, I believe that this house adds to the diversity of the neighborhood and the city. And I think it would be added, added value to the entire other properties that are adjacent and in the same neighborhood. But I think a little diversity in housing designs is a good thing as opposed to monotony and the same thing over and over again.
Okay, thanks, Francis. I guess I'd like to voice an opinion and I'm really, I'm torn on this like everyone else on the sidewalk, but I live in this neighborhood and the applicant is absolutely right there. I, I have to walk in the street. There are no sidewalks. It's a pretty wide street for most of it. But it is a neighborhood. This isn't like an isolated house or warehouse, you know, where we've talked about the sidewalk to nowhere. Now, if we, you know, to me, this is a situation where if you're going to start, you have to start and this is a neighborhood. And so I, I feel differently about this sidewalk than other sidewalks, but I, I'm voicing that. Other comments, question, discussion?
There's no other comments. I would, oh, go ahead, Greg.
Do we have another comment?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was just going to say that, yeah, this is Greg Watier. I too will agree with Francis that I will grant, or I mean, I would vote in favor of the variance on the sidewalk. The second thing is that I think, I think that diagram height was met and I think the idea of not having to live an eight-foot ceilings is an adequate request for folks. So I, I will be in support of Part B. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so Francis, we have a motion, right?
Francis?
Yes.
You're moving staff, okay?
Moving staff, except for Part A, which I recommend approval.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right. Yeah, sorry. Okay. Tyler, let's vote.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogust?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungus?
No.
Rocky Sposato?
Yes.
Johnny Alsovar?
That's a no on A and a yes on B.
No on A. Dory Brials?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
I'm going to do no on A and yes on B.
And Caleb Burksen? So motion for item A would carry 10-2. And then the motion.
I think, oh, sorry, near mine. Sorry, go ahead.
Then the motion for item B would carry 12-0, or excuse me, 11-1.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Great, okay. I think that's all the items, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Do we have a director's report, Mike?
I had my participant screen up and was going back to the mute. Just wanted to thank everybody for the patience tonight on the meeting, a lot of items to cover. Also wanted to wish everybody happy holidays and a great new year. It's definitely been a challenging year. I hope all of you are healthy and safe and wish everybody a better 2021. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Mike, and I would echo that. Stay healthy, stay hopeful.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Jan.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Jan.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.